Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to our town hall meeting. It occurs to me that there may be some of you who I have not met. And so for those, let me introduce myself. My name is Edward Halpern, and I am the chancellor and CEO of the college. We have a good deal of material to cover at today's town hall meeting, and many of your colleagues will be presenting. If you have a question for any of the people speaking, or if there's something that we don't cover that you would like us to speak about, please go to the Q and A box on the computer screen, type in your question or comment, and we will respond to as many of them as possible after the initial presentations. I am sorry to report that we must begin our conversation this afternoon with me advising you of the death of Dr. Ralph Tony O'Connell. Mrs. O'Connell informed us of Dr. O'Connell's passing about an hour and a half ago. We understand that he died yesterday. Dr. O'Connell was a graduate of the College of Holy Cross, and he received his M.D. degree from Cornell. He was an intern and a resident at the St. Vincent's Hospital in Greenwich Village. After his residency, he was a military medical officer in the United States Army. He was stationed at Fort Knox, Kentucky. He became the vice chairman of the Department of Psychiatry and the clinical director at St. Vincent's Hospital in 1974. He joined the faculty of New York Medical College in 1980. In 1996, Dr. O'Connell was named Provost of New York Medical College and Dean of the School of Medicine. He served in that capacity until 2013. Dr. O'Connell was the president of the Associated Medical Schools of New York from 2003 to 2005. He was on the Board of Trustees of the Roman Catholic Archdiocese of New York from 1991 to 1997. He was president of the University Club of New York from 1993 to 1995. His portrait hangs with the gallery of past presidents of the University Club of New York. I found this photograph of him. This was taken on the day I began moving into my office in Sunshine Cottage in 2012. It's Dr. O'Connell and Vilma Bordanaro flanking my wife Sharon outside Sunshine Cottage. Dr. O'Connell was married to Jane Burke O'Connell, and they were the parents of children and grandparents. We hope that the family is comforted among all those who mourn in Zion and Jerusalem. We hope that they should see no more sorrow, and we extend our heartfelt sympathies. At this point, I have no information about a funeral or memorial service. We will, of course, take our direction from Mrs. O'Connell and the family. We gather again for a town hall meeting in a continuing pandemic. We are now two years since the initial report of this disease from Wuhan in China, and we continue to do what is within our power to keep the campus safe. The issues which I think we'll be facing in the next few weeks is whether the definition of being fully vaccinated for Pfizer and Moderna recipients is to have a booster shot or three shots. There was a serious discussion about whether or not the definition of being fully vaccinated is not two shots, but will be three shots. That'll be something we'll have to think about here on the campus. We are going to have to up the amount of testing we do when we return from winter break because of the Omicron variant and the apparent rapid transmissibility of the variant. I'm sure many of you, along with me, read with interest the report in the news yesterday that the Public Health Ministry in Israel is now recommending a fourth Pfizer shot for people over 60 years of age who have received the third shot at least four months ago. We will, of course, want to see what the data is supporting that assertion. Much of the evolving data so far is not peer reviewed. There are reports from the company and scattered reports on the news service. Surely, we are going to have to avoid any non-mission-critical group gatherings. It will not therefore come as a surprise to you. There is simply no one who is interested in renting us a large indoor space for commencement in May of 2022. So commencement exercises will have to be under tents, which we will rent to have on the campus, and we'll have to split the commencement ceremonies into smaller ceremonies for the most part to avoid large gatherings. While we are in this phase of dealing with the pandemic while conducting our research, our education, and our service, remember that we continue to move forward on several major projects on campus. The renovations of the biomedical research laboratories are continuing. I will ask for full cooperation with Vice President for Research Solomon Amar and the team working on this research project. When Mr. Matten advises you of changes in workflow patterns and spaces that have to be closed off for construction, please be mindful, and I am sure of your cooperation. So, once again, if you have questions for any of our panelists who are going to be speaking following me, please type them in the Q and A box on your computer screen, and we'll get to as many of them as possible. Now, let's hear from our multiple speakers, hear what they have to tell us about an update of what's going on on campus, and I'll see you all back again after the speakers are done with their presentations for the Q and A part of the program.
Good afternoon. I'm Marissa Montecalvo, and I'm going to give you a COVID-19 status update. So, the data for our community are the following. It's only the 20th of December, but we do have 18 cases. That, of course, is better than the 28th that we had last December, but last December was pre-vaccination, and it looks as though we're on a trajectory toward more. We have lots of safety measures in place. You are familiar with those measures. But I think we are going to need to really think about what else we can do with the upcoming winter and Omicron variant here. So first of all, I would ask you to please get your booster as soon as you're eligible, and we will be moving toward a policy requiring that. Very important to test for mild symptoms, particularly for those who are vaccinated and boosted. Home testing is a good idea. It does require confirmation. But what I really want to emphasize to you is that it's going to take a multi-prommed approach with something as transmissible as this. And so I'll just share with you my story. I'm here with my mask on, speaking to you from my home because I have COVID. And, you know, I'm just a typical situation in a vaccinated, boosted person. A member of my household, who's, my whole household is vaccinated and boosted. That person had some nasal congestion and tickle in the back of their throat. Wasn't really sure, didn't think much of it. Then started to wear a mask, but before they wore a mask, we had dinner. We lingered at the dinner table for probably a half hour. Within 24 hours, the person tests positive. Forty-eight hours later, I've got the same tickle in the back of my throat and the cough. So the good news, of course, is that in vaccinated, boosted people, it's, you know, this appears mild, but you can't be sure of that. And it's going to take a few months before we know that and know whether the vaccinated persons are developing more serious illness from this. We hope not. We don't think so. But I would urge you to be very careful about going to restaurants. In fact, I advise you not to do that. I think when you're eating and you take off your mask and you're there with other people in a public setting, there's a tremendous amount of disease around right now. And although I know the holidays are with us, I would urge you to keep it to smaller gatherings and to be very careful and to home test at mild symptoms until you're clear as to what's going on. I look forward to your questions. Thanks very much.
Hello. It's nice to be back again. They've asked me to say a few words about COVID testing on campus. First, let's remember the real objective is to prevent COVID on campus and deal with it quickly when it does happen. The background rate in this region is climbing rapidly right now, and Omicron's share has grown from 3% to 73% overnight, even higher than that in some parts of the New York area. We're still not sure if it's more or less severe than Delta and the others, but we sure don't want to be the ones who find out personally. So make sure you're vaccinated and boosted. That makes the biggest difference. As for testing, we have screened the campus population systematically every six to eight weeks with saliva testing, looking for COVID infection that is asymptomatic. Since a year ago, we have found zero asymptomatic cases in random samples, most recently last month. We will check again early in 2022, and we might even add a non-random testing event after people return from holiday travels. That will depend on COVID trends over the next few weeks, and we'll announce it widely if it does happen. Meanwhile, please take the ongoing threat seriously and be careful out there. Chances are you won't succumb, but you could still pass the infection to someone who does. When in doubt, mask up, wash up, stay apart, and postpone events that are postponable for your own safety and your friends and loved ones. Thank you.
Hi, I am Lori Solomon, Medical Director of the Family Health Center and Chair of the Department of Family and Community Medicine. As we enter the final weeks of 2021, we are faced with yet another COVID variant. Omicron is even more contagious and is projected to become the dominant strain circulating in the United States within the next few weeks. Recent outbreaks have even occurred in fully vaccinated populations, as in Cornell Upstate. So what can you do to protect yourself and your family? Vaccination will help protect you against severe disease and hospitalization. It offers the best protection from infection. If you and your loved ones are not yet vaccinated, this would be the single best thing you could do now. Anyone who's received the Janssen vaccine two months ago and anyone 16 and older who's received Pfizer or Moderna more than six months ago should get a booster dose now. Children ages five and older can receive their primary series of the Pfizer vaccine. The series consists of two doses spaced three weeks apart. There's a specially formulated smaller dose for children aged five to 11. We offer all vaccines, the Janssen or Johnson &amp; Johnson, Moderna, and Pfizer, including the pediatric formulation at the Family Health Center. Anyone can get vaccinated at the Family Health Center regardless of insurance. Please give us a call at 914-828-0435 to schedule your appointment. Most days, we can even get you in on the same day. For those of you who are traveling or who have symptoms of COVID, we also offer COVID PCR testing by appointment only. Results are taking one to two days for pre-op or travel testing and up to three to four days for routine testing due to the high testing volume currently. We are also seeing an increase of influenza cases locally. So if you haven't received your flu shot yet, now is the time. We offer flu shots by appointment or on a walk-in basis to anyone aged six months and older. If you have health concerns or needs, we offer a wide range of services. We now have two board-certified family physicians and one family nurse practitioner on staff to care for you and your family. We look forward to being your partner and help.
Good afternoon. My name's Karen Murray, and I'm the Dean of Admissions for the School of Medicine here at New York Medical College. Today, I'm going to give you a brief snippet into the 2021-2022 virtual admissions cycle. We're just about midway in our cycle, and so I'd like to give an update as to where we are. As of today, we have little over 12,000 applications. This is a decrease from last year, but still a slight increase from the year before. We're using the virtual MMI platform again this year for interviews. And being the second year that we're using this platform, we're a little more familiar with the platform, and we're able to do more, we are able to invite more applicants for interview during this particular cycle. So the interview day starts with orientation. The applicants meet Dr. Nadler, Dr. Halpern, and Dr. ATM. They also get to meet with a few select students and the student panels, and then the interviews start in the afternoon. Interviews start around 1:00 and go on till about 4:00 in the afternoon. We're using the same portal we used last year. It's the Prospect HR Virtual MMI Portal, and we do like this portal because it's a fully automated portal, which makes it a lot easier for both the interviewer as well as the applicant. So the MMI interviewers are given training sessions before the start of the MMI season. They're also given mock interviews, mock MMI interviews, as well as a daily briefing that's given to all our MMI interviewers prior to the start of that day. During that daily briefing, we can give the updates in the portal as well as feedback from the admissions committee. Something new for this year is we've started on-campus tours. We are extending on-campus tours to all of our accepted students. Right now, we have groups of 10 to 12 students that are coming on campus for this in-person tour. The applicants need to be fully vaccinated to be on campus and comply with the on-campus survey. Currently, it's about a two-hour day where the applicants present at around 11:30 and meet with Dr. Nadler in Kirsten around 11:45 in Sunshine Cottage. After meeting with Dr. Nadler, the group is divided in two, and half of the students will have lunch with current medical students, and the other half will go on tour with medical students and staff from the admissions office. I must say, this has been a really big hit with the applicants as we've gotten quite a bit of feedback on these on-campus tours, and we're hoping to be able to continue this next year. But with the new spike in COVID cases, you know, we're not really sure if we'll be able to continue, but hopefully, we'll be able to continue this as well next year. A couple of important dates that I want to mention for admission. And, you know, the thing I wanted to say is AMCAS has made this a completely applicant-driven system in that on February 15th, the plan to enroll option opens for the applicants. And this is where the applicants, after being accepted, whether or not they're accepted to one medical school or multiple medical schools, can let the medical school know that they plan to enroll to that school. On April 15th, if you've, you know, had more than one acceptance, you know, AMCAS is asking that you really select three acceptances. So you have to drop down to three. And then on May 2nd is when the commit to enroll opens up in the AMCAS portal. So up to this point, it's up to the applicant to choose and decide what they want to do in terms of which medical school they want to attend. The last date, however, which is July 5th for New York Medical College, this really is not applicant-driven. This is a deadline that we give the applicants to commit to enroll to New York Medical College. If they have not committed to New York Medical College by July 5th, their acceptance will be withdrawn, and that acceptance will be offered to another student or another applicant. To date, we had, we have a little over 1,000 applicants that we've invited for interview. We've already interviewed 487 applicants. We do have 28 days left in the interview cycle, starting in January, and we're going to continue to interview through the end of March. The admissions committee continues to meet via Zoom twice a month on the second and fourth Tuesdays of the month. And this is just a snapshot of the class as it's shaping up for incoming class of 2022. And what I've done is I've compared that to the last three incoming classes at this point in the admissions cycle. As of today, we have 51% New Yorkers, 61% women, 23% underrepresented in medicine, 9% alumni, and 2% faculty. For a second look day, we do have, we were planning to have an in-person second look day, but again, this is kind of up in the air because we're not sure what's happening. So we may have to plan again for a virtual day, and this is scheduled for April 1st of 2022. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Edward Farkas. I am the Vice Dean and Chairman of the Admissions Committee for the Tuero College of Dental Medicine. I am here today to report to you about the selection process for the class of 2026 and how it's going overall. From a numbers point of view, we have currently 2,465 applicants in the queue. Of those, 2,219 have completed their applications and are being reviewed. And of those, 2,219, we anticipate to interview about 500. We have currently interviewed 319 of them. From those 319, we have sent out 180 acceptances. And the average metrics of those acceptances are as follows. Our DAT academic average is about 22. Our DAT total science is 23. Our science GPA is 3.59. The non-science GPA is 3.81, and the total overall GPA of these applicants, of these accepted applicants, are 3.67. All of those numbers are very high quality, and we've been very fortunate that we've been, we have an applicant pool that is top shelf. I'd also like to say that our interviewing team has done an amazing job. Throughout the COVID crisis, we've been doing virtual interviews. We've also been doing in-person interviews. What we've done is we've alternated one week virtual, one week in-person, and this seems to be something that students appreciate and allows us to have interviewers from remote locations who otherwise would not be able to come to the school to perform this task. As the numbers, as the COVID numbers creep up, we will reevaluate this policy and maybe go to virtual. But at that, at this point, that decision has not been made. Also like to say that we're learning from the applicants during the interviews as to why they chose Tuero. One of the things, there are two basic themes. There are two basic themes that they seem to be talking about. One is that word has gone around that Tuero College of Dental Medicine is a very high-technology school, possibly ahead of other institutions when it comes to teaching digital dentistry, and that seems to be a magnet for these applicants. And then at the others, at the other end of the spectrum is the fact that word has gotten around that the Tuero College of Dental Medicine has a very collegial student environment that is both student-centric and also warming and inviting. These two main points seem to be a draw and seem to draw out the highest-quality applicants. So in conclusion, the state of admissions for the Tuero College of Dental Medicine is strong. We are attracting high-value applicants. They are eventually matriculating into the program. Our interviewing staff is doing a fantastic job, and we are providing our faculty with the kind of students they need to produce high-quality dentists to meet our mission goals. Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm pleased to have this opportunity to provide an update on undergraduate medical education in the School of Medicine. First, I'd like to thank the faculty, particularly the dedicated course and clerkship directors for their extraordinary efforts to deliver our curriculum in spite of the unique and unprecedented challenges imposed by the COVID-19 pandemic. I'd also like to thank all of our students for their resiliency and focus in adapting with us throughout the academic year. Our efforts in undergraduate medical education have been split between a focus on the curriculum redesign and to providing meaningful enhancements to our existing curriculum. Both efforts have been informed by the ongoing strategic planning process in the School of Medicine, led ably by Ms. Celia Freeman. Our efforts towards redesign of the curriculum have been informed by the vision of our curriculum, which states that our dynamic and integrated curriculum will graduate exceptional, self-directed, and compassionate physician leaders dedicated to the health and wellness of all people and communities. Our redesign has been proceeding at a fast pace with regular meetings of multiple stakeholder groups. The redesigned curriculum will provide meaningful and deliberate integration of basic and clinical sciences, enhance the longitudinal delivery of core curricular themes, increase the support for individualized learning experiences, research and scholarship for all of our students, enhance our students' readiness for residency, and provide an earlier entry into clerkship and the advanced clinical phases of the curriculum for our students. We are continuing to fortify the leadership structure of our redesigned curriculum with the appointment of Phase 1 directors. We are interviewing faculty to serve as module directors for all the components of the curriculum. We continue to meet regularly with multiple stakeholder groups to provide information and to ask for feedback on all aspects of the redesign. And as I mentioned previously, we are moving rapidly into the design phase of our curriculum to ensure that the curriculum that will be implemented in August of 2022 is meaningful, exciting, and continues to engage our students, promoting all of the aspects of our curricular vision. While we have exerted significant efforts towards curriculum redesign, we are not looking and losing focus on our current students. We continue to expand the health system science curriculum, our areas of concentration program. We have introduced several new curricular threads, anti-racism and health disparities, culinary medicine, and medical imaging. We also have continued to enhance our self-directed learning program for all of our students. There have been significant efforts to expand and enhance the clinical training programs offered to our students and competency-based assessments. Working with the Dean of the School of Medicine, we have created new partnerships with affiliated clinical programs and continue to recruit clinician and basic science faculty to act as core educators in our M.D. program. We have partnered with Student Affairs to introduce new career exploration activities that will function in parallel to our new curriculum. And we continue to make modifications to our academic calendar to promote earlier entry into the M4 curriculum for our current students. Thank you very much, and I wish you all a happy and healthy new year.
Good afternoon. I'm Jerry Nadler, Dean of the School of Medicine and Professor of Pharmacology. I am here to inform you all of some exciting recruitments occurring at the School of Medicine. I am here to inform you all of some exciting recruitments occurring at the School of Medicine. However, I first want to thank all of our administration, chairs, faculty and staff for all their efforts to keep our learners safe and help them move forward in all their missions and all of our missions here at the college. And I first want to thank Dr. Islam for identifying with his search committee an outstanding new vice chair of research in the Integrated Department of Pathology, Microbiology and Immunology. This is a very important recruitment, and I'm very excited to say that the search has been successfully completed. And I soon will be naming the person to assume this important role of vice chair of research in this department. We are also recruiting for a new designated institutional official, which will lead our GME office uh, for all our residencies at the college. I want to thank Dr. John Pellicone and his search committee for identifying a number of outstanding candidates. They've completed their Zoom virtual interviews, and the lead candidates are starting to come on campus, actually starting this week. I'm very optimistic that we'll have a outstanding DIO for that position. And I also want to thank Dr. Paul Diamond for serving as our interim DIO until the permanent DIO can be identified. Finally, we are just initiating a new national search in partnership with Westchester Medical Center for a new chair and director of the Department of Surgery. The search committee will be named this week. And I want to thank Dr. Peter Panzika, our chair of the Anesthesia Department, for helping to lead this important search for a new chair and director of Department of Surgery. And I also want to thank Dr. Stephen Lansman for serving as interim chair and director for this important department. I want to wish everyone a happy, healthy holidays and a very safe and enjoyable new year. I now want to turn the microphone over to Dr. Dean Holtz, who'll tell you about some exciting recruitments in the School, Graduate School of Basic Medical Sciences. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Dr. Marina Holes. I am the dean of the Graduate School of Basic Medical Sciences and professor of cell biology and anatomy here at New York Medical College. I am pleased to update the college community that we're currently conducting an active search to recruit for three positions in the basic sciences as part of our strategic plan to augment the research capacity at New York Medical College, as well as in response to the LCME requirement to have robust faculty sufficiency. We have received a large number of applications and we are moving swiftly with the process of review. We are about to finish conducting the first round interviews, which consists of a virtual seminar open to the entire college community and an interview with the search committee chaired by Dr. Marcella Rota from the Department of Physiology. The virtual seminars span a diverse breadth of expertise we are seeking in the candidates. And for that reason, they have been very well attended by faculty, students and fellows. We're also actively engaged in phase two of the process by hosting on-campus visits for excellent candidates, and we are ready to start extending offers to finalists. All the candidates who advanced to the finalist stage have received high marks, not only on their scientific potential, collaboration and collegiality from the faculty and administration members they've met with, but also from students whose feedback is very important to us as we expect that the new faculty members would be active participants in the training and teaching mission of the college. Thank you.
Want to thank all of our presenters and we're going to be answering the questions which you have submitted in the Q and A function. First, may I ask Doctors Marissa Montecalvo and Laurie Solomon to join us, please? First, I'm sure we all on campus want to express our gratitude to Doctors Montecalvo and Solomon for taking good care of us for the last two years in a heroic effort. We have a whole series of questions for the two of you, so I suppose let's, uh, we'll, I'll do each of them and then we'll do alphabetical of, actually in alphabetical order first and opposite alphabetical order second. So the first one question is, the questioner wants to know, is it really worth getting a flu vaccine this year? Didn't we quote, get the antigen wrong for predicting the type of flu this year, close quote? And why should we bother to get the flu vaccine? So why don't we do Marissa first and Laurie second?
Thank you. It is absolutely important to get the flu vaccine. Remember that the flu vaccine covers four different strains. It's a quadrivalent vaccine. Uh, there's a fair amount of H three and two in circulation right now. Uh, and sure, it can be off a little bit, but that doesn't mean that you don't get a flu shot. Uh, and the strains vary during flu season. And what's prevalent now may not be prevalent in January and February. And so I would strongly urge everyone on this call to be sure to have received their flu shot.
Laurie, anything to add?
No, I'm in full agreement. We, uh, we have plenty of people who are ill. Um, and there are a lot of people in the hospital. You don't need to add additional flu cases. So let's do what we can to keep our campus healthy.
Thank you. Well, it looks like our next question is also for the two of you. Uh, but we'll let Dr. Solomon go first and Marissa second. If I'm going to make an appointment and I need a flu shot, please tell me about timing the flu shot with a booster shot. Do I get them done the same day? Do I get them done some spaced apart? And so how spaced apart?
The recommendation is you can receive your flu shot and your COVID shot on the same day. So, um, if you, uh, and you can walk in on most days. Today would be difficult as we're doing a lot of PCR testing, but most days we have availability for walk-in flu shots. And we can generally tack in a COVID shot to that as well.
Marissa, anything to add?
Same. I mean, uh, certainly you can get it on the same day. We have flu shots in health services. They're at no charge to students. And our COVID vaccination, we do only through organized clinics. So, you know, if you want to get a COVID shot and a flu shot today, you should be at the family health center. We're very fortunate to have that resource.
Thank you. Looks like the next one is for you, Marissa, and I'm not sure whether I would phrase this as a question or a plaintiff's cry. The person types in, are these vaccines and boosters ever going to end?
So I think we have to be patient and we have to wait for science. Okay? You know, remember that there's a whole memory cell immunity that you're not hearing a lot about. Okay? So there's a lot of data still to come out. What's clear is that if you're immunosuppressed, severely immunosuppressed, you need three doses for primary vaccination, and then you booster six months later. And everyone else needs their regular primary vaccination and booster at six months, obviously for messenger RNA in two months if you were a vector vaccine initially. Look, you know, the good news is this is a mild infection in the boosted people. That is fantastic news. I mean, this is not March of two thousand and twenty by any means, but those mild infections are extremely widespread. And, uh, you know, we just have to try to mitigate that. Uh, I don't think we know what the immune profile of each of the vaccines is going to look like six months from now.
Thank you, Marissa. We'll let you and Laurie take a break, but there's already a bunch more questions for you, but I'll let you rest and I'll call back, call you back in a little bit. I'm going to need Dr. Farkas, Dr. Murray, Dr. Nadler and Dr. Amler to come on screen next, please. Well, I have a whole series of questions here, which are all variations on the same theme. The questioners would like the four of you to share your thoughts about in-person instruction and in-person admissions activities as the Omicron variant evolves. How are you going to think about that? What would prompt us to make a change in current policies about in-person instruction? Or for Karen, whether we're going to continue these tours and for Dr. Farkas, whether we're going to offer in-person interviews. So I suppose let's, uh, let's try this in alphabetical order. It makes it easy. We can start with Rob Amler.
Thank you for that one, Dr. Halpern. Thank you. Look, you know, the, the primary responsibility of every one of our academic programs, as Dr. Halpern's pointed out many times, is the safety and protection of our students, our faculty and our staff. So when the risk becomes elevated, we will obviously have to shift away from in-person activities and in the direction of what are fortunately fairly good online tools to get the job done that we have to get done. Now, in the case of clinical education, hands-on training, either to do a procedure on a patient or in the case of my physical therapy and speech language students to do some of this in your vicinity, in your face treatments. This cannot be done online. But we have had great success over the last two years in maintaining some of those activities in an in-person environment with great care, great caution. And whenever I pass one of those labs, like our PT lab on the ground floor of our building, I see that people are distanced, they are face shielded and masked and so forth. And that's the important thing. And then we monitor our on-campus population very closely to make sure that we're not, uh, that we're not creating a problem. So the answer is it's going to depend and we're going to have to be very careful like we have been so far.
And as we go in alphabetical order, Dr. Farkas will be up next. You're going to continue to have, offer an alternative of in-person interviews or you're going to have to stop that as this evolves?
So again, this is something that we'll have to monitor to see what the background rate is. If we have to, we will go to virtual, to virtual interviews completely. The students seem to be receptive to actually show up on campus, but obviously safety first. And with what Dr. Amler said, I could not agree more. There are certain parts of the curriculum that need to be taught in person. Our clinic, for example, but in our clinic, all of the students are head to toe with PPE. So we have that advantage of protection besides everybody being vaccinated as part of the deal. So we are monitoring closely. Uh, at this point, we're not going to resume interviews until the new year, until the weekend to the new year. By then we might have more information, but switching over to virtual interviews is just a matter of making some phone calls and sending out emails. So we will stay tuned and probably make that decision right when we come back from the new year.
Karen, your plans in the medical school admissions office?
Thank you, Dr. Halpern. I think I would agree with Dr. Amler and Dr. Farkas. We really have to keep watch of the, the background rates and see what's happening. We did notice a trend that most of the applicants who come on campus are local. So a lot of the applicants who are in other states are actually not taking part in this on-campus tour. But depending on the background rate, I think we would have to revisit that at some point in time. We are still completely virtual for all of our actual MMI interviews. And we're only offering this to the accepted students. So depending on how the background rate is in January, we'll, you know, talk about that again and see whether or not we can continue. It would be nice if we could, but if the, if it, if it seems that it's gotten to a point where it's not safe, then we may have to refrain from continuing with the in-person tour.
Dean Nadler.
Yes, uh, thank you, Dr. Halpern. So this is a rapidly, as you've learned and everyone realizes, rapidly evolving area. More than once daily, I communicate with my team. Uh, and safety is number one and planning for what we're all seeing is very, very important. Right now, uh, because of what was already said, our M three and M four students are in the clinical rotations. There's no way to substitute clinical rotations virtually. And so we will be continuing those for sure. And our students are all vaccinated and most of them are also boosted. And they use safety equipment as needed. So that is going to continue. The pre-clinical education as of this moment is not changing from what we have been doing. And since the pandemic began, uh, we shifted with our team and our IT team to virtual Zoom lectures. So the lectures are Zoom. That they're, however, there are in-person small group education, which will continue as well as the anatomy and clinical skills will continue. And the students wear PPE and they are, uh, enjoy those opportunities. However, we are all very cognizant of the rapidity of the spread of this variant, even in vaccinated students and faculty and staff. Therefore, as was mentioned, I'm very proactive in looking forward to hearing an on-campus testing opportunity where we'll have a good handle on the number of cases on campus. And if the number of cases increase or there's wider spread, the situation could change for the pre-clinical education. But as of today, we are continuing, uh, the educational methods that we have been doing up until now. Thank you.
Thanks to the four of you. It looks like the next group of questions are for me. There are several people who have typed in questions asking about the potential status of a cost of living raise for non-union faculty and staff at New York Medical College. When we had a previous town hall meeting earlier this year, I shared with you that we were going to strive to do a cost of living increase in the spring semester. You'll remember that we had a limited number of people who were furloughed in two thousand and twenty. And I said at that time that my first priority was to get everybody back from furlough before we started talking about raises, but we did both those things, got people back from furlough and were able to do a raise last year. Our challenges for the budget right now are that in some of our degree and certificate programs, enrollment is down. And in a tuition-driven institution, if we don't have full enrollment, that hits us on the bottom line. I hardly need to tell you that it's tough to raise money from philanthropy. In the middle of a pandemic, people are worried about their own practices, their own OR schedules, their own stock portfolio. And while Best Chaser and the team have been working heroically, it's a tough time to raise money. And also in some of our areas, research funding is down. I've also explained in the past that the amount of federal COVID relief money that was given to higher education was in the beginning based on your undergraduate enrollment and people getting undergraduate student loans. We don't have any undergraduates in New York Medical College. It makes us different than the rest of the Turo system. So our checks from the federal government were smaller. So, uh, what I'm hoping to talk about is a two percent cost of living increase, but we have to wait until the financial data comes in from the first two quarters of this fiscal year. So the second quarter ends December thirty first, which means we'll get the data around the first or second week of February. And we'll see if we're in a financial position to do a cost of living increase. The truth is right now, stay tuned. And as soon as I know something, you'll know something further, but we need to wait for the data to be sure we can keep our promises and afford what we'd like to do. Um, we have some questions for Dr. Pamela Ludmer and for Dean Nadler and for Marissa Montecalvo, if the three of you could come on, please. The questions concern. How one would design the curriculum for the School of Medicine. In the short run and the long run, what are you thinking? About occupancy rates? In the simulation center or in small group learning sessions? Do we, are we going to have to change how many students there are over what distance, both in the short run? And as you design a new curriculum for the School of Medicine, if we're going to be up against recurring. Mutations or whatever the next pandemic is, what does the long run mean for small group learning? And simulation in a medical school? Perhaps since we haven't heard from Dr. Ludmer, we'll let her go first and then in alphabetical order will be Marissa and then Jerry. So Pamela.
Thank you so much for the question. First, I just would like to say that small group learning continues to be very important and it's something that we're going to do everything that we can to maintain. Many of the small groups actually are smaller than capacity in the mods. So we've been very mindful of that. Sometimes we have to run sessions twice. So that we have half the number of students in the mods and we're still able to get everybody through those experiences. And if we have to decrease the number of students at any given time in the SIM center, we have the ability to do that and we just adjust the scheduling so that occupancy isn't an issue. But it is something that we're still going to work very hard to maintain because we do believe in the value and the importance of students learning together and in person. And whatever happens, we'll just make sure that it's done in a very safe way with an eye towards the needs of the public and public health. Thank you for the question.
Marissa.
Yeah, you know, I think everything we have to really try to preserve small group learning. I think that. Some of the transit, some of the extraordinary transmission that we are seeing. Has to do with the lack of recognition of those very mild symptoms. So you know, a scratchy throat. Does not need a case definition for SARS-CoV-2 infection, but it is in fact, one of the most common symptoms of breakthrough infection. You know, so people have to pull themselves out. As soon as you have any hint. Of, of infection. And or if you're exposed, you have to really be scrupulous about the testing. And you know, even mask at home. I mean, I know we're all masking at work and school, but you know, household transmission is where you're going to see a lot of it. Most healthcare workers get this infection from household transmission. That's well documented. So I think we have to really up our infection control. Measures and preempt, you know, transmission with some of those things. And we should be able to continue to work. And you know, we want to preserve small groups, certainly educationally, they're very important.
Dean Nadler.
Thank you. Excellent, excellent question. And the points were very well addressed by. Doctors Ludmer and Montcalvo. The value of small group. Teaching and education is currently very much focused on and in the new curriculum. Will not be lessened at all. In fact, will be very, very important in terms of the systems-based. Learning that we have and we're anticipating keeping safe and doing what we can with the groups. And so I think Dr. Ludmer addressed it very well that we will adjust what we need to adjust with. And we've been very nimble and adjusting. Along this pandemic and we will continue to do so until we all hope and pray that we'll be in a different situation. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll need Dean Nadler to stay on and Dr. Farkas and Dr. Amler. To join us. While Pamela and Jerry and Marissa were answering the. Previous question, someone wrote in and wants to know. What the three of you are thinking about? For orientation for incoming students next year? Assuming that we're either not out of this or something new is happening. How do you plan? Your new student orientation? The questioner writes, and there were multiple. M1 face-to-face events in the first week of orientation. Last year, what are we going to do this year? So. So that Dr. Amler doesn't think I'm picking on him for being born with the letter A as a last name. We'll start with Dr. Farkas first. And then, and then go to Rob and Jerry.
Our plans for orientation include a virtual orientation as we had done the previous year. We had gone back to some in-person last, last cycle. But we've supplement that with videos and. And ways of bringing the students together virtually. The events planned around orientation are all subject to last minute. Evaluations of the safety of the environment and will be done accordingly. So you know, what we did was. Events, for example, where people had to get together. We postponed them until after the summer and then we ran them when we were able to.
Thank you. And Jerry?
Yes. It's an excellent question and. It's. Last year, what we did is we had events hybrided where we had some virtual events, but we valued the in-person events. We didn't hold all of them that we used to, but we had a tent. And we had the in-person events outside with capacity limitations. And safety limitations that we had. So. If possible, we will be looking to have a similar opportunity. However, it's all dependent upon where we are with COVID at the time. If we are in the situation today, for example, or next week, for example, and holding it. I would say that it'd be very difficult to have a large group setting. Even, even outside. With food, but I'm hoping that by the summertime, the weather will be better. And maybe the surge will be reduced and we can go back to what we did last year, which was some in-person and some hybrid.
Maybe while we're talking about it, Jerry, you should share what your thoughts might be, the way things going about match day. What could we expect for match day?
Well, match day is obviously a little closer. And we were talking about that even before, before the surge was. In place, we were thinking that we could have something indoors. That is out for sure. But we, we're looking that potentially. If we can have something in a, in a tent, it's possible, but otherwise we'll be. Potentially looking at a virtual event. The virtual event, we clearly. It's not as meaningful for the, for the students. It's not a meaningful for the family. It's not as meaningful for us. So we're hoping we can have something, but it, I most surely will not be inside if we can do something outside. In an event that would be preferable, but we are nimble enough to. Potentially have to do a virtual match day, which is our last resort, but we might have to go there.
Thank you, Jerry. Rob, your thoughts about? Orientation for SHSP?
Yeah, in the last two seasons now, two cycles, we have done this all by virtual, by Zoom. And this is pretty well drilled in our school. We. Nothing is ever perfect, but we're pretty, we're pretty satisfied with that process. If anything, we've been discussing this fall, the extent to which we could open up some events. To hybrid and in-person and at least giving students the option of doing some classes in person or some parts. Of course, work in person. That of course is going to be up in the air again until we see what happens in January. The month of January, actually, we don't start classes again in public health. Until the third week, so we have a little extra time for that. But we'll basically do what we have done and. As I know, all the other schools will do, we are going to try to bring in more in-person activities. To the extent that the COVID circumstances allow.
Thank you, Rob. It looks like I'll need. Marissa Montcalvo and Laurie Solomon to come back on. Marissa and Laurie, we have a whole slew of questions about. The pluses and minuses of at-home testing kits. Versus confirmatory PCR testing. The questions include. I can't seem to get my hands on a kit. Do you have any advice? I can't seem to get an appointment at a testing center. Do you have any advice? If I do a test on myself at the house, but I still need to come in for a confirmatory test. After that. So. In whatever order the two of you would like to tackle them, please speak to the in-home testing. Kits versus confirmatory testing at a testing center.
Should I start or Laurie? Should I start? Okay. So first of all, I want to say that the at-home tests. Are very helpful if you're symptomatic. So you know, think of it like a pregnancy test, right? You think you're pregnant, you do a home pregnancy test, you're pregnant, right? The difference is that. You know, in the, they're not, the healthcare system is not going to be able to react to that, right? So the Department of Health is not going to be able to do your contact tracing. They need. An official test because. It's not a validated test at home. But it is an excellent way. To, for you to know what's going on if you have mild symptoms. And to jumpstart that isolation process, which you should be doing anyway. If you have any symptoms. The downfall of the home test. Is really in the asymptomatic exposed person with sensitivity is very low. What to do? So let's just say you have a positive home test. So if you isolate for 10 days. You know, you, you won't need. A confirmatory PCR if you can't get one. Because once you've done your isolation, we're treating you in health services as a true positive. When we get that positive home test. And we ask you to try to get a test, but if you can't, we're going to assume you're infected if you're symptomatic. So you know, there's, the system is completely overwhelmed. We are very, very fortunate that we have the resource of the family health center and the Westchester Medical Center tent. But it's really hard to get appointments, you know, elsewhere and at the tent also. Laurie, do you want to?
Yeah, there is a, there is a difference between doing it at home and, and at a, at an office. And there are rapid. Antigen tests that can be done at the family health center. We just got our, our shipment today. We were out for a while. So, so and if we have a positive rapid antigen. At, at the health center. That's a positive test and that's reported directly to the Department of Health. So we don't, we don't need to confirm a rapid positive antigen at the family health center with a PCR. But the home test, there, there, there is variability with the home test. Good luck finding one. They are in very short supply. I think they're out of stock in, in most local CVSs and Walgreens. And when they do get them in, they're just flying off the shelves. So it's very difficult to get your hands on a home test, unfortunately. Supposedly that's going to change. In January. Probably not going to help you with your holiday plans this year. Was, was there any part of the, of the question that I didn't answer?
I think we could use a little more clarity of. Marissa said, well, if you test yourself at home and you're going to stay put for 10 days, but. If you test yourself at home and it's positive, is it your advice that someone should go to a testing center and get a PCR or not?
If they can, if they can get an appointment, yes. You know, but if they can't, then I would say trust the test and stay home. It's better to be safe than sorry. It's better to. Be at home and not spread COVID around. Than, than to try to come in. And I mean, really the, the at-home testing is, is very useful for people who have symptoms. After doing rapid antigen tests in the, in the family health center for this whole pandemic. Really the, the people who are positive on that are people who have symptoms and generally in the first three days. Generally, if you're, if you're symptomatic after that, the antigen test is not very good. The other thing is if your antigen test or your at-home or your antigen test is negative. That doesn't necessarily mean that you don't have COVID. And so those of you who have symptoms and have a negative at-home test. I would highly recommend that you get a PCR test, especially if you're exposed.
Yeah, I'm fully saying the exact same thing. So, so if you're symptomatic. And your home test is positive, yes, you should get a confirmatory. It's still, you know, but. If you can't, you self-isolate for the 10 days for sure. And a negative and a symptomatic person is useless. And again, in an asymptomatic person is not very helpful.
Thank you, Marissa. Thank you, Laurie. If I could ask all of our panelists to come back on. Live. During the course of today's town hall, I see that we've been up to. About 150 people tuned in. I think we all need to guard against the blues, friends. The college is fine. We're all still here. We're all going about our business. In the generation and conservation and dissemination of knowledge. We are of responsibility to our patients and our students and to our coworkers. I'm sure I speak for everyone. And the staff and the administration of the college and wishing. Everyone a Merry Christmas for those of you celebrating the holiday, a Happy. New Year and that we should all look forward together to better days ahead. Thanks for joining us and. Happy holidays, everyone.